Hi, good evening, everybody. This is the meeting of the Select Board for Monday, September 26th. With me, I have our clerk, Ellen Rosenfeld, our Vice Chair, Craig Schultz, our Assistant Town Administrator and HR Director, Karen Bure DeMarzo, and our Town Administrator, Mike Gazinski. And I'm the Chair, Erin Underhill. We have a number of things on our agenda today, so we will get cracking. The first thing we have are announcements. We have some upcoming recreation programs. One of them is a cemetery stroll appropriate for all ages at Prospect Hill Cemetery on Saturday, October 15th at noon, and that's a $5 fee. We also have a Halloween Touch-It Truck coming, and that's a very popular event every year. And it looks like this year, back by popular demand, is the Pumpkin Drop. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of people that'll be excited about that. That is Saturday, October 29th from 1 to 3:00. And you are encouraged to bring an unopened bag of candy as admission. We also have an upcoming health fair and flu clinic through the Milis Health Department. We'll be posting information on the website.
Yes.
So then, if you'd like to go there and register, you can. It's Saturday, October 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Town Hall VMB. We also have a new sign, if everybody's noticed, at Veterans Memorial Building here, Town Hall, out front. It looks fantastic.
Yes, we have, I was gonna say, we have a wooden sign. We didn't want to be outdone by the police and fire, so we have a sign from Cavallaro Signs. It is a wooden sign. It was donated very generously from the Rosenfeld family. Thank you, Ellen. And it looks absolutely fantastic. We're waiting for some lighting to come, I think, for it at this point. But otherwise, take a ride by and check it out. It looks great.
And two more announcements. Just a reminder that our town meeting date has changed for this fall. It will be Thursday, November 10th at 7:30 p.m., rather than the typical Monday. The last announcement is just a call for volunteers. We're working with, on forming a committee for a working group to work with some consultants for MBTA multifamily 3A rezoning. So we'll be, this committee will be working to propose a rezoning article for a future town meeting. So we're looking for anybody with interest from the community that would be, that would like to volunteer, and we can certainly give you some more information on that if you reach out to the Town Administrator's Office. Next, we have some scheduled appointments. The first one, which is what I think everybody's here for, is a full-time firefighter/paramedic. Good evening.
So this is the first appointment we're doing since coming out of COVID, so we're a little excited to be here tonight. Happy to have members of the department and Brandon's family here tonight. Tonight, I'm here to recommend the appointment of a new full-time firefighter/paramedic. After a long-term firefighter went out on a medical retirement, we have to replace him. So we started the process. We put out an announcement. We got applications back, great candidates from within, which we were really excited to have. Our Deputy Chief and EMS Coordinator did the first rounds of interviews, and then I followed up with a second, and we had a unanimous decision on Brandon Green, who's here tonight in front of you. Brandon is a veteran of the United States Navy. He went through our Call Recruit Program about a year and a half ago. He has been filling in for the injured firefighter, working shifts. And when we were looking for this position, we have a strong saying in the firefighter department, we look for the fit. Somebody who's gonna come in and fit with the motto that we have, our family style, town first, all those things, and Brandon just fits into a T. He is welcomed by all the members. They're all excited to work with him. I think he's gonna be a great employee for the Town of Milis. We think he's gonna do great things for us. He's enrolled in the paramedic program, and he'll, part of his job, appointment requirements, will be completion within 18 to 24 months. Fortunately, that's how long the class takes. This role has worked for us with other firefighters. They've been successful, and we have no doubt Brandon will, you know, graduate a paramedic with, probably high on. He's very intelligent, and we're lucky to have him. So I'm here tonight to recommend to the Town Administrator the appointment of Brandon Green.
Thank you. Madam Chair, upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, I am requesting that the Board vote to ratify my appointment of Brandon Green as a full-time firefighter/paramedic to the Milis Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to ratify the appointment of Brandon Green to a full-time firefighter/paramedic.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to... Help me.
Ratify.
Ratify. Sorry. Ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Brandon Green as a full-time firefighter/paramedic.
With the requirement that he be certified as a paramedic within two years of his appointment.
With the requirement that he be certified as a paramedic within two years of his appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
With the Board's permission, I'd like to invite Brian Green, his father, up to pin his badge on him.
Sure. Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Yes, and we have you again for an acting fire lieutenant.
We do. So we have a lieutenant who's gone out with a non-job-related injury. He's gonna be out for three to four months. And to keep our continuing of operation and our incident command structure, I'm recommending that we appoint our EMS Coordinator, Brian Palameno, to acting lieutenant position on Group B, effective immediately. And he'll stay in that role, acting, until the lieutenant is able to return to 100%.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Requesting the Board vote to ratify temporary appointment of EMS Coordinator, Brian Palamino, to an acting lieutenant for Group B until the return of the injured officer.
Did you see him?
Yeah. Come on up.
I'll make a...
Come on up here.
I'll wait for him to come up.
Okay. Awesome.
So Brian's been on the department for roughly 10 years now, full-time. Was one of the first appointments I got to make as a chief. He quickly became our EMS Coordinator. He's been doing a great job. Aaron has worked with him in negotiations. It's the next role that he'll take on, and he'll do a great job with it, we have no doubt.
Great. I'll make a motion that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Brian, is it Palam...
Palameno.
Palameno?
Yes.
As acting lieutenant on Group B.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Brian Palameno to acting lieutenant on Group B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Great.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Congratulations to the new member. Congratulations to Brian, Chief Barrett, and staff. They do a tremendous job, and he's a great addition to the department, so, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Where are they going?
There's more appointments.
There is more fun to go.
Part of the job, just hanging around, guys.
That's all the fun.
Okay, next, for appointments, we have a Department Assistant One for the Executive Office. Okay, okay. So, as you know, at the, at annual town meeting, we, the town meeting approved a new 18-hour-a-week clerical position for the Town Administrator's Office. We've been advertising since the end of June for this, and we have finally found someone that we think is a great fit for the office. Her name is Victoria Schindler. I think both her skills and just her personality and her willingness to jump on in with us make her truly a good candidate. So we are hoping that you will ratify, again, the Town Administrator's appointment of Victoria for an 18-hour, part-time position in our office, pending completion of a physical.
And, Madam Chair, just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Board for its support of this position, which I believe is critical for us to be able to really move forward in that office. The workload has only grown, so this will be a great help to the office. So with that, I will ask that the Board vote to ratify my appointment of Victoria Schindler to the position of Department Assistant One in the Select Board's Office upon the successful completion of a standard office physical.
I'll make a motion to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Victoria Schindler to Department Assistant One upon completion of the physical and other, no, physical, standard office physical.
Yes.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Victoria Schindler to the position of Department Assistant One in the Select Board's Office upon the successful completion of a standard office physical.
I'll make a motion to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Victoria Schindler to Department Assistant One upon completion of the physical and other, no, physical, standard office physical.
Yes.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Victoria Schindler to the position of Department Assistant One pending a successful completion of a standard office physical. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have an Economic Development Committee member. Okay. Mr. Weiss?
Yeah.
We'll make you talk.
Good evening. For the record, Bob Weiss, Economic Development and Planning Director for the town. On behalf of the members of the Economic Development Committee, we'd like to ask the Select Board to appoint Matt Irolano as the newest member of the committee. Matt is a, has experience as operations and technology manager. He has already been involved in the town's government. He was involved in the Website Committee and the Beautification Day activities, and he has already visited our committee and asked a lot of great questions at our last meeting, so the committee feels he would be a great addition to the committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Irolano to the Economic Development Committee.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Matt Irolano to the Economic Development Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next up, we have review and approve the contract for unidirectional flushing with Mr. McKay.
I've actually been waiting for this, Jim. This has been for almost 12 years in the coming. With us is Kirsten Ryan. She's on Zoom.
Good evening.
This is one of two things that we'd like to discuss tonight. The unidirectional flushing, what it is, is right now, when we go out and flush hydrants, we've been going out and just, not randomly, just opening hydrants to flush them. There is a proper way to do it, and we've had the background in that for quite a few years, but we need the assistance with Kleinfeld to come in and finalize the, and get it on our computer system and stuff like that. So I asked Kirsten if she can come up with a program, and I think she let her explain it, and this was already approved at the May Town Meeting also, so this is just the contract itself. So Kirsten, if you want to take it for a few minutes?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yeah. Yes.
Just a really quick explainer. If I get the right screen. I'm not sure, are you, I don't think you're seeing the right thing. Hold on. Sorry about that. One, okay. Are you seeing a slide that says contract approval flushing program?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, just checking. Okay, good. So, and by the way, thank you, sorry I'm bumbling it a little bit here, but thank you for the option to join remotely. It's, I definitely am glad I'm keeping my germs at home with myself today.
So are we.
Yes.
Should've taken out the entire Fire Department.
So, just really briefly, yeah, so as Jim mentioned, the town had, had another consultant develop a program for flushing some years back, and they're just finding it a little bit unwieldy and difficult to implement, so we're gonna come in and provide some support. Along with the flushing is valve exercising program, so that was something that Mass DEP identified as needing to be addressed, and just, so that the town has more of a systematic way to identify which valves in the street are, you know, either broken or paved over, so that that's documented, and then going forward with using the Work Management System, making sure those valves get exercised and repaired as needed. So, the program or the project has two tasks, starting with the valve exercising assistance. We'll go out with the folks from the Water Department, work closely with them, and go around and try to map any faulty valves and identify those before we go into the flushing part, because you want the valves to be working right before the flushing starts. And then, the water main flushing program assistance, we're really just gonna be looking at the assisting program, suggesting recommended updates, making updates, and then working with the department staff out in the field to do some training and do some implementation of that. So that is what that contract is for. Any questions?
Questions?
No.
No.
So with that, I mean, now we'll document it on how it's gonna go proceed from here on forward, on what the final product will be. We'll have a book of, this is how you're gonna do it from now on until it gets changed again. And the amount of the contract is $49,465, and I gave the two, it comes out of special projects, and with the increase when this was bid such a long time ago, there has been an increase through Kleinfelders' costs, and the Town Administrator proved that. So the total bid that we're asking for is $49,465.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Kleinfelder for $49,465 for unidirectional flushing.
And authorize the Town Administrator to sign?
And authorize the Town Administrator to sign.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the not-to-exceed amount of $49,465 for the water system flushing and valve support contract, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract on behalf of the town. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the second part of this is the, well, it's not an approval, it's just a general discussion. I believe I had sent out to you last week of the water permit, and I hope everyone read it. It's, we knew it was coming, but was hoping the day that it didn't come, but it did. And it's not good news. There's a lot in there that we all should be very, more concerned about, a little, is this the, yeah, this is for the, for the water permit.
Yes.
And, just a brief breakdown of, they want to reduce our average daily flow significantly. And the watering ban that we see in place now, everyone has to know that that's gonna be, you know, that same structure is gonna be going forward, and there's no way around that either. The reason why I asked Kirsten to join us with this and give us an assistance on this, Kirsten worked a lot on the Exelon Project, where we did a lot of research, so she has most of this information of daily flows. I mean, we just need to update it since, since then. And it's not just an idea of going in and saying, okay, we're gonna accept it. We do have a right to question the permit that they sent us, and Kirsten has a way of getting to do that quite well on our behalf. So we know what the cost is gonna be. It will be an article at the Fall Town Meeting, and, so I'm gonna let Kirsten talk a little bit more about it, and the ramifications of, actually, you know, what they want to do is, and the reduction, and what she's gonna do to help us, you know, to change that.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. Yes, the Water Management Act permit renewal, it's, the DEP reviews these periodically, and they, it's a five-year review, at least that's what they call it, but it's been 11 years. So the last permit that Milis had was issued in 2010. I've done quite a bit of these permit renewal assistance for towns. We were just wrapping up one for the Town of Barnstable, and done them for Yarmouth, Wilmington, a bunch of, a bunch of towns. And yeah, it can be, it can be challenging, especially since there's been new regulations on the Water Management Act was revised in 2014, so there are new permit conditions in addition to the prior ones. So I tried to highlight a few of the key things that I saw in the permit renewal, what's called an order to complete. They, they basically say, we've reviewed your permit, here's the conditions that are already in place, here's where we think you are or are not complying with those conditions, here's the new conditions that are coming, and how we plan to incorporate those new conditions into your new permit. So then, then there's, you have 90 days to respond to the order to complete, there's a series of questions, and then typically it takes, you know, many months to kind of finalize and work out and kind of negotiate the final terms of the permit, which it also, you know, has to go out to public comment. So some of the existing permit conditions that Jim mentioned, they, what DEP does is looks at your recent history of water usage, and if you're not using near your permit limit, they like to reduce the permit limit. So, the, right now, you're authorized for .99 million gallons per day from all your wells, and they want to reduce it down to .84 based on recent history. The last, you know, recent usage I looked at was more like .6, .7 for Milis, so it doesn't on the face of it cause a huge amount of concern, but, you know, you have to question what kind of future growth plans does Milis have. You have a lot of wells, we know that we have PFAS issues we need to deal with, and that'll be the subject of my next visit, but, I mean, if you were to treat your wells and have a lot of excess capacity, does the town want to entertain selling water to neighboring communities that may need it? That is something that's in the permit as an exception that the DEP wants to eliminate. So, let me just walk through these bullet points really quick, try not to get too far in the weeds, but reducing that overall limit, as I mentioned, the next one down, maximum pumpage from each well, that condition, you're in compliance with. Groundwater protection, zoning protections, really, all Milis needs to do here is to ask Sherborne to adopt protections over the portion of Milis's Zone 2 that extends it to Sherborne. Stream flow restrictions on wells 5 and 6, so wells 5 and 6 are limited in their pumping to a condition when the Charles River drops below a certain stream flow, with an exception there for if Milis is selling water to Franklin or upstream communities, and DEP wants to just eliminate that exception altogether. So that's something that, you know, over the course of this project, we'll need to discuss and, you know, to think about what you want to do about that. Residential gallons per capita per day, standard of 65, Milis is in compliance. The unaccounted-for water standard of 10%, Milis has been out of compliance a couple of years in the past, two of the past three years, and so we'll need to prepare a compliance plan to get that back down. Outdoor water use, we'll need to document what you have in place for, water use restrictions, and most likely update a bylaw. Forgive me, I don't, I haven't looked at your bylaw, if you have one, I assume you have one, but we'll need to probably make some updates so it's up to the current standards. And then, for the new permit conditions which are gonna be incorporated, excuse me, as Jim mentioned, during that project, when Exelon was looking to purchase water, we did undertake a review of water supply and demand back then, and projected demand, which I think is really helpful to dealing with this now. We also were thinking, back in, that was in 2016, that the permit review cycle would be coming due soon, so we incorporated what's called a minimization plan, you know, trying to get ready for the new regulations being incorporated into your permit. We didn't know it was gonna be delayed, you know, five more years, but, so some of that work can be utilized in this effort and just updated, which is good. Most likely, it'll mean having to develop more of an enhanced conservation plan and procedures, and updating the bylaw, which I mentioned, so. And as I said a moment ago, yeah, this, you know, there's often a series of meetings with DEP where the town proposes, you know, one way forward, and the DEP pushes back, and a little bit of back and forth, so. I already reached out to DEP and requested an extension for Milis, knowing that you didn't have this anticipated in your current budget, you were gonna need, you know, to fund it at town meeting, so the 90-day clock, I asked them to move that starting from November forward into mid-February, and the DEP has already given that an okay, so that's good. So with that, I'll stop and pause for any questions. That's really all I had to present, just kind of a really quick overview. I haven't really dived into it and digested it yet, it's pretty complex, so.
I don't have any questions.
No.
No.
No, I was part of that 2016 group, so I'm kind of well-versed on this, I think. So, just in closing in this, I'll be back, you know, with the appropriation of the funding. I know it's what, I did have it on my phone here, I didn't bring down the, I'm sorry. Is the amount $55,864? Yeah, $56,864. I haven't talked to the Town Administrator or the Finance Director, you know, where the funding will come from, it's just gonna come from available cash, or, but it still has to be, how we're gonna put it into the budget, we'll figure that out and come back with that. I mean, most importantly, you know, what Kirsten said, she already sent the letter in, and we did get the extension. We just got this, and they just sent it like, okay, you're gonna accept it. And, I mean, I even think there's a part here that they're looking at taking the right away from us to not to sell water to Franklin in the permit, which is just unacceptable.
And to be clear, because there's a lot of misconception of this, we currently don't sell water to Franklin.
We don't sell water to anybody.
But we're trying to reserve that right, yeah.
Not one gallon of water leaves Milis.
Right. But we've always wanted to keep that option open for ourselves. And, oh, I had something else there on it. Oh, and the fees, the expense for this to be paid from the water funds?
Only.
Yeah. Just water.
I mean, I think what everyone still has to realize is, I mean, here, when consumption goes down, as it did last year, that's why rates go up to 15%. Our consumption was so far down with, you know, the year before was a very wet year. This year, we had a watering ban, most people, you know, adhered to it, so consumption, again, is gonna be way down. So, you know, even the more people we tie in, it doesn't equate to what people use those irrigation systems, and I'm probably the biggest offender of them all. But, so that's, we will be back with that. We did kind of fudge this by, we had like three other, different other discussions for tonight's meeting, but we did not get it in on time, so Kirsten, we'll be back. Again, most of the stuff we knew were coming. Over the years, we knew all this stuff was coming, and it's finally here. I'll be back later tonight to show you another unfunded mandate that the DEP has put on us, so I think that's all I have to say about this part until, at your next meeting, we have two more articles that we'll probably put forward.
Okay.
Anything else, Kirsten?
No, I just, I'll say that, yeah, at the next meeting, when I'll talk about the town-wide PFAS study and the recommendations for where to install treatment next, they'll be, I'll provide some information on, you know, usage history and supply versus demand. I think that's definitely clearly shown that, you know, you have, you know, you have enough wells to provide a lot of different redundancy, provided that we get at least one other one treated. You know, so you do have quite a bit of water system flexibility once we get PFAS treated. PFAS treated, such that if you did want to sell water in the future, you know, you would have the ability to do so. So it's just good for thought.
And I think that ability to sell water in the future with other towns having potential PFAS issues is something we'd like to maintain. And the other piece that Jim was saying, the water fees are mostly related to fixed costs. I mean, the amount, it doesn't cost very much per gallon of water to get it out of the ground. It's everything related to that which all has to be paid for.
Once it's out.
Yeah, once it's out of the ground, it's pretty free. But the pumps, the pipes, everything else gets, so as more, as less gallons are used, the cost per gallon just has to go up, you know.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was just going to note, so we have, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the other two articles are on as placeholders, right, on the warrant?
Yes.
So I don't know, you added another meeting on 10/3, I don't know. Originally, we had a meeting on 10/17, they're adding one for next Monday, so I don't know which one. Kirsten, would you be ready for next Monday? Or do you need to wait till the 17th to do more for the other presentation?
I do, I have a commitment to another town next Monday. I was thinking the 17th, I didn't realize it was something for the 3rd.
Which is fine, because they'll be signing the warrant on the 17th, but they can just explain.
Is that played the 17th?
Explain that on the 17th.
That was a question we were assigned.
Okay, just throwing, not to scare you.
Yeah.
Not to panic you.
The 17th is fine.
Yeah.
So that's fine. So we'll hold it to the 17th, that's all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsten.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Need to come up?
Yes, please.
Yes?
And just identify yourself.
Yeah, Jim Duffy, Exchange Street, Melis. Quick question, what are the costs for? Are they for administration costs to negotiate with the DEP? Are there costs for infrastructure to comply? What are the costs for 55 grand?
So, because we do have a printout? And that was going to be presented. So data review and the OTC response of 220 hours, meeting and presentations of 73 hours, for a total of 293 workable hours. So it is all administrative type work.
There's a lot of, and there's some analysis and report preparation, and then negotiation meetings with the DEP. Now, we may not need all those hours on the negotiation side, but given the complexity of the issue here, what they wanted to revise in the, excuse me, in the permit, they wanted to, you know, have a task that had enough hours without having to go back, you know, before the board. Now, if we don't use all those, we don't use them.
Not to exceed and come back to the board.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the next thing we have is the presentation of the final report for municipal vulnerability preparedness grant flood resiliency project. Jim, you're just not going to sit down.
We're going to turn this right over to Mr. Weiss. Andrew Goldberg is with us. You remember, may remember Andrew from?
Yes.
He was with Kleinfelder, he's with Calhoun and Brown right now, and he spearheaded this project. What I just want to say, I know you've seen the video that we shot on, it's either online, I don't know if it's on the cable website yet, but I encourage you to look at it. It's helped us out through our permit for stormwater also. We use that as a filming. Bob spearheaded this, I just paid for it.
I didn't.
The different departments.
I think the video is on the homepage of the website, if people are interested.
Yes, it's on.
I think it's still on the homepage.
Bob can introduce more of Andrew and?
Well, there's not much more to say, but I think everybody's kept up with the problem with climate change, you know, how it will affect Melis in the future. We started probably even before, but as far as I can remember back, the emergency management team created or updated our hazard mitigation plan back in 2018. They identified a number of problems, including drought, which we've just realized, possible brush fires, and flooding around town. So we then, two years ago, we started working with now about 20 other communities in the region up and down the Charles, with the Charles River Watershed Association. And we looked further at riverine type of flooding around town. And Andrew and Brown and Caldwell, the companies representing our consultants, picked that up and looked even more precisely at the flooding situation in the town. So with that, I will throw it over to Andrew, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jim and Bob and the board, really happy to be here to present the work that the town completed over the last year related to identifying flooding risks and developing some tools to develop not just the risks, but the solutions to mitigate them in the future. We prepared quite a few slides, and we're not going to go through everything that was put together, but I do want to really make sure that we highlight a few key take-home messages, which is that there are flooding risks in town and they will persist in the future. But the town is now, as a result of this project, a little bit better prepared to implement some recommendations to minimize those risks, both to critical infrastructure, town-owned property, and to private property as well. We're going to be presenting three of those potential solutions that are all focused in the downtown corridor, projects on Union Street, Haller Drive, and Main Street, right outside of the building that you're at today. But before I do that, I'd like to talk a little bit about how these recommendations and potential solutions were developed. So the purpose of this project, as Bob and Jim mentioned, so I'll move quickly, was to identify areas in the town that are vulnerable to flooding, to develop the strategies and to educate the public through many different mechanisms, including through tonight's meeting about these risks, and to engage the community on potential solutions. And we had a four-step process for doing this, that were all interconnected. First, we collected data, we then developed some tools and computerized models that looked at flooding risks with the town's drainage system and with the rivers. We then developed some solutions focusing in on some critical areas, and developed many different tools, including press releases, that public service announcement that Bob was mentioning, to educate key stakeholders in the public. And really, I don't want to go through every single line, but the purpose of each of these things was to make sure that the tools that were developed were really reflecting the current state of the town's infrastructure. The town's system mapping for drainage has come a long way in the years that I've been working with you all. It's a lot of fieldwork that has gone into creating a up-to-date and complete record of that system. And I'd like to use this time to also thank the many participants that provided information about flooding risks and recent developments that influenced the system. With that data, we then developed those computerized models that allowed us to look at flooding risks under various different storms, and then to also develop the solutions that were right-sized for your community. Not every solution is going to be increasing pipe diameters or adding new systems or adding tanks. We really did want to look at what would work for Melis, and that included putting in some kind of innovation, innovative solutions, like working with your existing ball fields to provide temporary storage and infiltrate water, as opposed to building a really large concrete tank. So we'll preview that and talk a little bit more about that later. And then, of course, we've already talked about some of the components of the education outreach plan. So with that process, I'd like to now show you some results. And I have a couple of maps prepared for you tonight. And the larger format ones are provided in the final report. But right now, we are showing on the right-hand side flood inundation in blue at different depths. And you will also see that some of these manholes are shown as having flooding. So if they're large and blue and purple, that represents flooding as well, not just the riverine flooding over the surface of the land, but also flooding from capacity limitations of the town's drainage system. So this is one design storm event that is used across the town's locally specific model, as well as that regional model that Bob was talking about. And this is representing 2030 conditions, or a one-in-10-year storm event from 2030. And I'm going to show you one more map that has a little bit more blue on it, representing future potential conditions, which is shown as 2070. So a little bit further in the future, 50 years out, that same storm event, but a little bit more intense, representing what future climate will bring to the town. And you'll see that flood inundation is a little bit more severe than was shown on that prior slide. I'll interpret this figure now that you've had a chance to see, well, we see a lot of surface flooding along the eastern part of the town, along the Charles River. Yes?
Sorry, inter, a second. Can you, can you change it so that we're just seeing you, the one, because the strip with the people is covering the map a lot.
Thank you for telling me that.
Sorry, just suddenly, I'm looking at it. If you hit in the left-hand corner up there, the one rectangle, you can?
The single bar.
The single bar there, yeah, you can. Because I'm watching.
Because that's on your side, or?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't, you said.
So when you're, what we're seeing is we're seeing a whole strip of all of the people who are at the meeting, instead of just seeing you? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If it's a big, I'm sorry, if it's going to cause a big problem. That's better. There you go. Oh, no, it's not the same, it's better on mine. Sorry.
Yeah, I think I have copies of it on my computer, and I've.
Okay, I don't want to hold it up, I just didn't know if it would be helpful to, if there was a way to do it. There you go. That's better, even that's better a little bit. There you go. There you go. There you go.
I'll find my house.
I just wanted you to see a little more. We can get home.
Yeah. Good, I'm fine.
Sorry, Andrew, I didn't mean to break your stride there.
Continue.
I appreciate you telling me. Hopefully, it is now visible, and if it's not, happy to come back at a later meeting.
It wasn't yours. It wasn't you, Andrew, it was us, apparently. There you go, that's what I was looking for. Oh.
Oh, even better.
See, that's. Andrew, sorry about that, Andrew, thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Zach.
I know, really.
Thank you. So I hope that this.
Can you show 109 on this, please, and maybe the school or the town hall, just to give us some?
Orient us a little bit.
Certainly. I'll use my cursor to point out some major landmarks, because I understand that the text was small. Route 109 Main Street is through the middle of the screen along this curve. Town Hall is showing where my cursor is right now. Lynn Allen is up here. And then there are some other critical assets that are shown with stars on them. And I'm about to go to a slide that describes some of the flood impacts on those facilities. So I appreciate you asking for clarification, so that you could interpret along with us. And I have a slide of the downtown quarter as well, which I can bring up at a later slide as well. So really, to interpret this figure, there are flooding concerns that the town will be facing over the next 50 years across multiple different water bodies. It's not linked to just the Charles River water, the Charles River and flooding along there, there's the Bogus Stobruck related issues, and issues related to the capacity of the town's drainage system as it was built and designed. That's fairly customary with communities that have infrastructure dating back to, you know, the 70s, like the town's is in certain locations, that as these storms become more intense, there's more rain in a shorter amount of time, and there are more frequent occurrences of these extreme events, the town's infrastructure may be inundated. And that may cause flooding to some of the critical facilities that I'm going back to show. So we identified through this modeling several different locations that will be impacted by the capacity-related issues. Some of these facilities are shown here, and we've developed some project concepts for the town to consider that address flooding at some of these really key locations, including emergency responder facilities, like the fire station, police station, and a new elementary school. There's also flooding issues related to surface flooding or from riverine flooding, and many of these, you'll notice, are bridges. I understand from speaking with some of the stakeholders, that the town is actively looking at the elevation of your bridges, and trying to make sure that they're flood-proof. But as of right now, the modeling is showing that flooding may occur and cause floods. So the remainder of the presentation, to be respectful, time is really focused on strategies to mitigate flooding. We really don't want this to all be dim and gloom. The town's done a lot to identify the risks, and focused in on some key project areas that will help address the flooding risks at these critical facilities that are shown on the screen. The project areas were divided into three distinct segments and evaluated such that whatever solution is shown on the next slide really does address the bulk of the flooding issues. They're right-sized, as in we're not going from a 12-inch pipe to a 40-inch pipe, they're really just as big as they need to be, or a combination of strategies to minimize that flooding risk. And these options are now shown on the screen, and they really do represent the mix of traditional engineering solutions, like increasing capacity of the drainage system, or upsizing it, or the innovative nature-based solutions. And those tend to allow for the town to temporarily store and infiltrate or bring that water into the ground, so that it is not causing surface runoff or causing issues with the capacity of the town's drainage system. So there are five different strategies that are shown on the screen. Some of them are locally specific to the individual project, it's shown on the left-hand column. And each of them, again, on the right-hand column, reduce the flooding volume from that 2070 10-year storm event down to close to zero million gallons for that storm. That is a really extreme storm, and it's a storm that does not happen very frequently, but it's the one that, infrastructure that goes into the ground today should be planned for. So that is some of the key takeaways from this project, is that the town now knows where the flooding risks are and has some strategies to design solutions that are appropriate for the town. We are happy to spend a little bit of time answering questions and going through some of the projects, if you would like, and if that'd be helpful. But in conclusion, I just wanted to make sure you all see that you have options for how you can address these flooding issues. You can go ahead with selecting and prioritizing a singular project, implementing them in series, completing additional analyses, or going ahead and competing for grants to fund the next steps. So I really appreciate the time today and happy to answer questions, if you have any.
I don't think I know where we are. Jim?
Sure.
Did we already pay for this study and they're done?
Yes, this was all a grant. This was paid through a grant.
That's a good start. You should open with that.
I should have.
Okay, we can all take it.
There was a lot of work that, you know, Bob, myself, and DPW staff, in-kind services that worked on this, which was good. This is important, this is probably more important. I mean, it's just one of those tools that we have, now that we can go further, now we can apply for grants, as Andrew just stated, to start fixing some of this
Okay.
stuff that's out there. And, you know, this is the first time the DPW has worked with Bob's committee, the economical?
Economic Development?
Development Committee, we worked with them to prioritize what area needs to be done. And they were all highlighted in this. So this is phase one of, you know, there will be more work to.
And hopefully more grants to pay for that work.
There will be. That's why Andrew does a great job.
Awesome.
With filing the grants for us.
Yeah, the grant that was responsible for funding this is the MVP, which is the Municipal Vulnerability. which is the Municipal Vulnerability Perilous Program, the MVP. They also helped fund the, the grant that we did, just, the work that we did just previous to this. And with that and the Hazard Mitigation Plan getting updated, when we decide which project we want to go for to, to prevent this problems before they happen, we now have the plans in hand that we can go to the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs and say, this is the proof that's going to get us the grants.
So, this is the key to us getting the big grants to doing the big projects that need to get done.
That's right.
Excellent.
Very good.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you all, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Next up, we have Jim again for the review and approval of the II contract.
So, this is for GCG. This, again, this was approved at the May Town Meeting, this is the extension that I keep on talking about, we talk about sewer stuff, this is our commitment to the, that we are looking for II, and this is to remove it. This investigation, now we're going to start going into buildings, when I say buildings, homes also, to find the sources of people that have some pumps draining into their basement sink that's getting into the sewer system. And we know where the high locations are and that's part of the contract. So, I would ask, the funding's already in place for this, in the special projects in the sewer, and I would ask you to approve $136,710 to GCG Associates, actually, for the town administrator to sign a contract with GCG Associates of 84 Main Street in Wilmington. And they've been doing this for us for years and years and years, I mean, forever.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with GCG for II study for the sewer, for $136,710.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with GCG Associates in the amount not to exceed $136,710. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So, next, Mr. Lenahan, right?
Oh, it's you again, okay. You get a break.
So, no, I, Mr. Lenahan came in to discuss his project and I told him, at the time I advised him that their, the select board, the sewer commissioners had a moratorium on sewer capacity. And I told him to move, before he spent all that much more money moving forward, he should come to the board and explain his project as a LIP program, and I believe that's what he's here tonight to do.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be here tonight.
Sure.
So, I live down at 17 Eden Street in Milis, and I've been down there for about 15 years and I've managed to acquire the four, two families across the street from my house. They're a pre-existing non-conforming entity from 1972. And I was trying to make better use of the property that I have and was hopeful to come down and see if it was something that we could work together for a LIP program for a 40B project. I would like to put up either anywhere from eight to 12 units. I supplied two different configurations, one of which I think was a little bit rushed and the second of which I think has a little bit, it needs a little bit of adjustment. And I didn't want to waste too much time, money, and effort and come before you to, because everybody keeps telling me that my biggest hurdle after running around the, the town hall is going to be town sewer. And so, I just wanted to see if that was a possibility before you tonight in order to try and gain access to that. I do have an extra stub at number eight and 10 in which we have not used, the betterment has been paid. And I know that it's, you know, what I'd like to do is that there's two, between 12 and 18, there are two different, two families, side by side, that have an adjoining property. If you combine the two properties together and put the 12-unit apartment building out back, we would now, instead of doing just 12 units, we would actually be offering 16 units, because I have to drag the two existing buildings into the project in order to put everything onto one parcel of land. So, it would be 16 affordable units and that there are already four existing, which I would be giving up one apartment of those to conform to the 25%.
Okay. So, for the, okay.
You talk very fast.
No, that's okay.
I apologize.
The connections, the sewer connections is, like you said, that's really going to be your biggest hurdle. So, it currently, there's stubs currently, but not adequate.
Every single one of these is hooked up to town sewer, except for number eight and 10, which is the furthest one up towards the Trusker Brothers, so to speak. The betterment has been paid for that particular building, but has not been hooked up. The septic system is still properly functioning and I didn't know if it made any difference.
What am I missing if the betterment's been paid?
So, if the betterment's been paid, then I would think...
You're protected. What am I missing?
Is it for the new...
Yeah, okay, he's nodding.
I think that the, what I was told is that the issue is, is that there's a moratorium on town sewer. And so, that if I'm going to propose an additional...
But the betterment's been paid, is it that he's changing the use, Jim? What's, what am I missing?
I think it's the new building.
Is he adding stuff?
It's the new building.
New building.
If you look at the...
And I'm sorry that I can't turn it, but our PDF version does not allow me to turn it.
Okay.
Don't mess with it, Karen, it's working now.
There's a stub for this building and this building.
Okay.
Those are already hooked up.
They're hooked up?
Yes.
Okay, so, right.
And there's, you own this one too, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one that, that...
That's the one that has not been hooked up yet.
And, and there's a betterment.
But there's a betterment, yep.
Two units, so there's two, two units and how many bedrooms in each?
Uh, there's two bedrooms per each, so it would be four.
So, that's four, four bedrooms, 440, you know, 440 gallons. So, this is the new building that he wants to, to build for 12 units. So, he tied this one in and I believe he's going to tie that one in at the same time.
So, the, if, I would forego, if it was one of those things, if the, if there was really truly an issue of that you feel that this would put too much of a burden on the town system, that I would continue to keep number eight and 10, which is at the, the bottom of the, exactly. If I needed to continue to keep that on a septic system for four bedrooms, I would have no issue with that. And basically, trying, instead of going for 12 additional, excuse me, it would be 24 additional bedrooms, at least to try and knock it down to 20 bedrooms, to at least try and help to offset it. Because I don't mind managing a septic system for a four-bedroom apartment building, but I don't think that a septic system for a 24-bedroom apartment building would be something I would want to tackle or maintain.
All right, so, Jim, help me out. You're going to, I don't know what words you're going to need to use for me here, but, so, there's, there's current hookups, betterments have been paid. Is, is he just asking to be able to hook up while there's a moratorium, or is he asking because he needs more than what is already there and paid for?
Well, he, he's asking, this he can, this he can hook up to if he chooses.
There's no issue with that one, yes.
But it's the other one.
This is the, the extension that he would have to bring to you for their 12 units with three bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, so it'd be two bedrooms per unit, so it would be 24 bedrooms.
24 bedrooms, so 24 times 100 times, what are that?
2800.
2800.
Okay.
It's about 2640.
2640, 2,640 gallons.
What?
Yeah.
But there's not available capacity.
That's what we have to, yeah. Right now, there's a moratorium in place that prevents those 24 bedrooms being connected. I mean, that's done, no, that's the way it's voted now. But in two weeks, we're going to be reconsidering our sewer bylaw. And when we consider our sewer bylaw, the moratorium goes away, which is half-good news. We have to have enough capacity to be able to allow the connections on top of that. And that's what's going to be discussed in two weeks, whether when the moratorium is lifted with, if, if we vote to do that. If the allowable capacity that we have, using everything we've learned over the last three months, four months, five months, allows us to connect more sewers up, then we could consider a connection, based on our priorities, based on the availability and all those things. I'm not sure, and, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, we're going to be discussing that next week. There may not, short answer, there may not be capacity in two weeks, when we talk about it, to allow the hookup, just because we're at 103, 304% right now on paper. If we get some new numbers that change that, as soon as it falls down below, we have some guidelines we're looking at for what projects we'd consider, you know, we can get you in the queue. But I, I can't promise when that's going to be or what that's going to be until we take votes on it, you know? And even as part of the, as the LIP program, I mean, I guess that was the biggest battle was the LIP program and then the town sewer, was to see if there would, if we could work together on it and, you know, bring more affordable housing to the town and so...
Oh, trust me, that we want that.
Yeah.
We, we certainly do.
Okay.
The sewer is the big, is the problem.
How many of those units would be affordable? Uh, that, so, I have two there, I have two apartment buildings that are just, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. Yeah. And I would like to bring all four of those units into place, plus 12, which would add 16.
How many affordable?
Would be four, would be 25.
For the, I'm sorry, for the stock, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but if they're apartments, they all count towards our stock.
Yes.
Right, so it's not individuals. So, even though some of them won't be, they will count towards the affordable stock.
So, 16.
16.
Oh.
There's, there's some rules about apartments.
You think?
Different if it's, different if it's individual buildings.
It's, and that's, that's trickier than the, you know, so...
Right.
I mean, there, there's some back and forth talk on how that continues to count and everything else, too. So, there's, there's a lot to that still, from what I'm understanding.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have more conversations that need to be had, we're not ready to lift the moratorium, we're talking about a bylaw or policy that is going to kind of illustrate what criteria would be to hook up if there is capacity. And then, there's a very large argument of what capacity is and if we have any. If you talk to Charles River...
That's what we keep getting...
Charles River says we don't have any.
Okay.
Zero, not a thing. In fact, we're over. But that is on our, based on projections on paper. I, I, in reality, we're not, but if all of the projected projects that we've already approved and anybody that's paid a betterment all come online, then we're at, we're supposed to be then at our...
Well, we'd be at 90% once, they'd be at like 90-something percent once they all come online.
No.
Which is, which would still be...
No, no, no.
That's up for discussion in two weeks.
Yeah.
But listen, we're, we're, you're not going to be doing anything in two weeks.
No.
Two to four weeks.
Not, not at all.
Okay, we're going to know a lot in two to four weeks.
Okay.
So, we're going to know.
So, I guess, I guess if you're able to wait and have some patience, then we could talk about it again.
I'm a patient man.
Um...
When would you, when would you see...
Madam Chair, I, actually, I'd recommend that, you know, the board could, when you feel you're ready to have them come back, will reach out to the builder and, and ask them to come to a meeting, once the board's ready to have that discussion in regards to the sewer issue, because that's, that is the main issue.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, I would just ask, so, one thing in planning wood, and this is why I'm asking this, you, you stated that this isn't exactly, maybe we can get this more to what you really think you're going to build.
I, I'd be happy to do so, I just didn't want to hurdle a bunch of money on it and waste it, if it's not going to be something that if I need to start to reconfigure what my thoughts are. I mean, like, I, once again, I across the street have a four-bedroom home across the street, which I've paid the betterment for and have the opportunity to hook up to town sewer and I've stubbed in. I would literally be willing to forego both my house and eight and 10 Eden Street in order to try and give gallons per day back to the town in order to make this work.
Does it work that way?
It's up to discussion that we, legally, we can't do that, we can't accept it back. I, I will have to talk to town council. But even if you write it on, you know, handwrite notes, you don't have to change the drawing or anything, but this is what I'm looking at and this is what I would like to do.
Okay. Is there no room for a package treatment plant on that lot? Yeah. My new favorite word, by the way.
It, it isn't, it would be enough for him to build something there, I would think.
I've got one at the Y.
That's...
We're trying to hide it.
For 14 units, I'm not sure that that would be...
That would be worth it?
No, yeah.
It would just be a regular septic system.
Yeah, or, okay, yeah.
No, he can always go septic.
Yeah.
You know, but you're right, the, the larger building would, not a great idea.
For septic.
No.
And, and not with, not with that many people at the same time, is that you could run into a situation, it'd be just something...
No, in their apartments, so, and you're still responsible, so, I'm looking out for you.
Absolutely, thank you, and I'm very well aware, I see what goes down the toilet when I'm fishing it out, exactly, so...
All right, so, what we'll do, we'll continue our work here, we'll reach out to you and...
And should I expect to hear from Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
And you can feel free to poke me every once in a while.
It's all right, listen, I'm persistent.
So, yes. Sure, we're, I mean, certainly like the idea, just, you know.
Fantastic.
And, and you're certainly more than welcome to listen in when they're talking about that, I mean, probably would, even if you're, you can join via Zoom and just listen in if you want to, to hear kind of the discussion about the...
Not big on computers, but I look right down the street.
Okay, or you can come.
When, when is the meeting?
October 17th.
17th, yeah.
We'll start at seven, but we'll, I'll post the agenda a couple, you know, earlier the week, I'm sorry, at the end of the week before, prior.
Fantastic.
Or you can reach out and we'll figure it out.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, sure, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Mr. McKay, I can't believe it, again.
Wait till next week.
We have review and approval of snowplow rates.
Yes, I, I wasn't at the last meeting, so, that's what happens.
I know. He saved up.
Get the makeup for it.
With much discussion with the town administrator on this, I think, I hope you all read it, I, I hope you, let's not sticker shock on the prices of them, but I want to assure you that this isn't, we're not going to be the highest-paid town around and we're not going to be the lowest. And right now, we have four contractors that are already on, you know, and, and not that they've seen this, but they know that we're going to go up and help them out a little bit. We're taking over Hickory Hills, that's a, that's a pretty large development. Right now, we don't have the manpower in-house to, or maybe even, not even the equipment to operate on a heavy storm, on a big storm. We can salt sand, stuff like that, which they never had there ever. So, the prices are for the vehicles, but I think the, and they didn't go up that much from our previous year. I think the big thing is the, the incentive to get a contractor to come here. Mike and I talked about, should we give an incentive for, a percentage for the gas? And somehow, that, that just doesn't really work out. So, we went this route of, and most towns are doing this, you know, given the incentive of the $2,000, and you would get half at the beginning and then, you know, and then if you don't sign up by the timeframe of, then we'll only give you 1,000. The big thing is the, the $500, if a truck is with us and they're there for the entire storm, whether it be a contract that has three trucks, four trucks, if he signs on, we would give him $500 for each truck, for the whole, if he's there for every snowstorm.
For every storm, it's a one-time...
It's a one-time $500 at the end, end of the season. So, we haven't, the reason why you're voting on this, I mean, it, it's, it's expensive and it's going to affect, you know, the, what we pay for snow and ice clearing.
It will affect the snow and ice budget, but as the director said, these are the going rates. And the hard-cold truth is, this is what is going to need to be done in order to make sure that we have the plow equipment and the services available during the storms. And there are many other towns in the same vote that are struggling to maintain contracted snowplow drivers. And I, I support the proposal, I think it's something that we need to do. I think the incentive will stop contractors from jumping, you know, during mid-season based on different rates in different towns. And not that we don't have dedicated folks, we do, but we're going to need some more folks. And we have to be competitive.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I, I think I misspoke, I, I shouldn't have said that we, you know, we don't, we, So, I, I think I misspoke. I, I shouldn't have said that we, you know, we don't, we, you know, you, people give us a lot of equipment, and I want, I, I want to take that back. We, we've got some of the best equipment around that the town of Millis gives us. Um, we will get it done. It just may take a little longer than what people are, are used to in, in, in that development, but, um.
Well, with more streets and not more equipment than, you know.
The issue becomes what's an acceptable timeframe to clean up from the storm and clear the roads. And that's really what, the question is, what do, what do the citizens feel is an acceptable timeframe? And we feel these, um, rates are what's necessary to, um, provide that service in what we feel is an acceptable timeframe.
Yes.
Stop using 411 Union. See, does Hickory Hills have a homeowners association right now? Have they been doing it?
They do, and it, but it'll be turned over to.
Yeah, it's on a.
Will they be willing to work with the DPW in transition?
Trying to negotiate that right now.
Okay. And I will say Jim's staff does a tremendous job in the equipment, the building they got now. They've come a long way, but, yeah, if we sit more streets, they're going to need more help, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Are you really, are you really negotiating with them?
Well, not negotiating with the, we're, we're negotiating with the operator that clears the, the lot right now.
Oh, to take, to bring him in?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That makes sense. All right, so I guess I'll take.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the rates as listed for snowplow operators for this winter 2022, 2023 season.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the snowplow rates for the 2022, 2023 season. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I think I'm done.
Uh, looks like it.
I don't know.
Jim, I'm gonna miss you this meeting.
I know.
Been a big part of tonight.
All right, so next up, we have, um, we need to vote to close the fall town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to close the fall town meeting warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the fall town meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. The warrant is closed.
Great, thank you. And just a reminder to the board, um, the board does have the authority to open the warrant again. If you want to open it, just to put in articles that you'd like to put in. And obviously, you can remove articles, um, as you'd like, if you'd like to, except petition articles, not petition articles. With that, just an update, we did receive one more petition article earlier today, um, in regards to the, um, Jasper Hill property, also known as the LaBrosse property. And, uh, so that will be part of the warrant. Um, so in your packet, you do have a very rough draft of a first warrant, based on the articles that I was aware of at the time of putting this together. I didn't type out, we don't have typed out, but we will get it in there, the, all the petition articles. Uh, now there are four of them. And again, these are just in, in order as, similar to what we've done year to year, but the board can set any order you want for these. And I recommend that you review these and at your next meeting, I think we're, I asked the board to have a special workshop-type meeting next Monday for the primary purpose of reviewing the warrant, discussing the articles, um, and discussing how you want to organize the warrant and any changes to the articles you'd like at that time. I will be asking for the board to vote to approve and sign a final, um, fall annual town meeting warrant at your meeting on October 17th. I will be meeting with the finance committee probably every Wednesday between now and the town meeting, and they are meeting this Wednesday. I'm sure I will forward, uh, a copy of the draft to them tomorrow. But, uh, I'm sure they'll obviously want to get as much information as early as they can, so they can work on that. It's up to you, Madam Chair, if you'd like me to go through quickly the articles, or if, if you're okay, just if you want to wait till next week, you can do that as well. That's really up to the board.
So unless there's, um, my personal feeling would be to not go over all of this right now. Um, we certainly can if you guys both feel differently. But this can give us the week to digest, and then we'll be meeting on Monday anyway to go over this and prioritize, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that concept. If we can get any dollars in any of these that we know that would be, maybe not written, but we can pencil them in.
We will be working on that. Um, I'll be working with the finance director this week on that. Um, we just want to be as sure as possible before we put numbers in and then change, start changing them if necessary, just because that does create some confusion. But by next Monday, we will put as many numbers in there, fill as many of that, much of that information as possible.
Yeah.
By next Monday.
All right, so that's okay with you, too?
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Madam Chair, I just want to add, for those people at home, it is posted, the draft, remember, this is a draft warrant, and it says draft, is posted under the select board meeting, um, agenda for tonight.
Okay.
If anyone is interested.
And I do anticipate, um, again, one of the articles, um, one of the items that will probably will be added as an article is the, one of the items that was discussed, um, by Kleinfeld this evening, and the DPW director. So there will be a couple additional articles that will be requesting be added at your meeting next Monday.
Okay. Okay. All right, are we good with this one, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The next thing we have is the review and approval of a one-day alcohol license.
That would be me. So, um, Rich McCarthy, on behalf of the Bryce Matthew McCarthy Memorial Foundation, um, which is a nonprofit, um, came and is looking to do an event at the Oak Grove Farm. The Oak Grove Farm Commission is fine with that. He's looking for a one-day alcohol permit, um, probably for a food truck, um, to do alcohol. Part of that, because it's on town property, he also has to get, uh, one-day liability insurance, so he's going to reach out and do that. And it's for a fundraiser that will be held on Sunday, October 23rd, again, over at the Oak Grove Farm. The foundation, just as a heads up, um, was started by the family. They lost their child Bryce, um, right before his third birthday in a tragic accident here in Millis. So we would like to do everything we can to support them in this, um, effort. Um, they are raising money now to, um, do all kinds of different things, um, that help families. So, um, that's what this is for. Uh, they would be, and, and again, I think they're only expecting to maybe have some beer or wine for someone who happens to come. It's more of a family event. Um, the hours of sales would be from 11:00 to 3:45. So we are looking for the board to approve the one day.
I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day, uh, wine and malt alcohol permit for Oak Grove, for the Bryce, uh, the Rich McCarthy, on behalf of the Bryce McCarthy, uh, Matthew McCarthy Memorial Fund, uh, nonprofit for, uh, Sunday, October 23rd, 2022. Uh, is that subject to liability insurance, or?
Yes, subject to liability insurance.
Uh, adequate liability insurance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the one-day special alcohol license, um, for Sunday, October 23rd, from 11:00 to 3:45 for wine and malt, pending, and, uh, liability insurance for the day for the Rich McCarthy, on behalf of the Bryce Matthew McCarthy Memorial Foundation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have the ratification of a Microsoft contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in my discussions with our IT director, um, Mr. Donovan has, uh, looked into ways to better streamline our IT processes and our billing processes with Microsoft. And, uh, his work has resulted in finding a way to make an amendment to our agreement with Microsoft, which would result in a $4,800 credit to the town. That can be used regarding any other Azure use, uh, which is a component of our IT system. So I'm just asking the board this evening to authorize me to sign that change to our Microsoft agreement.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the new Microsoft contract that will relate, result in a $4,800 credit back to the town.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign the Microsoft contract, um, as stated, to result in a credit to the town. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have board and committee liaison updates. Does anybody have anything?
I don't.
I do. Capital Planning Committee, we're meeting every week now. It's lovely. Um, so, but we'll be done in a couple of weeks.
Me, again, this Thursday.
I know, this Thursday and next Thursday, Thursday, I think we're done. Yeah.
I think so.
So they've, uh, we, we, I missed the first one because I was on vacation, but we did prioritize, um, keyless entry system, ranked, we haven't prioritized, but we've ranked, um, keyless entry, um, a chiller for this building, for the HVAC unit, uh, the school cost study. Couple other items, a truck, I can't remember all of them, but we'll finish them all up by, uh, if, if I keep my mouth shut, we'll be done Thursday night, and then we can do it on, uh, following Thursday. It's the first time we did the rankings. Took a while to get the hang of the, the system. But, um, it's a good process and it'll give us an adequate, um, it'll give us a good list and it'll give a priority to them. Uh, the discussion was had that we'll rank all the items that are competing against each other, the chiller, the school study, the, uh, keyless entry system, all of those things in one list. Because that's competing for current available funds, no tax increase needed for those items.
Yep.
And then we would rank anything that is, um, competing for overrides on another list, which at this moment is just the senior center. So that will be either the first ranking or the last ranking on the list, depending how you classify it. But it's the only item on the list. And we'll, uh, there'll be a narrative explaining what the rankings mean and how it was, uh, done for that one, probably. We're still negotiating the final presentation, not negotiating, determining the final presentation for that. It'll probably be a lot of verbiage and not high, medium, low, because there's but one item. We thought that made sense, because the chiller, the truck, the keyless entry system, the school study are all competing for funds we already have on hand, basically. We wouldn't, um, they wouldn't be outside of the normal operating, um, funds. Whereas the senior center would be outside the normal operating fund, so it didn't really seem to be in, uh, direct competition with those other items.
Yep, that's a good way to do it, I think.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, anything else?
Um, and we're discussing, uh, no, more, more to come next, uh, next Monday.
Lovely.
And every Monday thereafter.
Uh, I actually have two. I went to, um, so I went to the Charles River Pollution Control District meeting. Um, I was the only one from the public there. And, uh, there was a lot of hot discussions about Millis. Um, currently, currently, the top projected offender is Medway at about 109%. And then we're at 103. Um, so I, I, it's, it seems like we must have crept up there, you know, to this number fairly recently, because the reaction from the board was pretty severe. It was noted that a letter may be sent to our planning board to make sure they know not to approve any more connections. The fear is that if a project goes through the planning board and then comes to us for a connection, um, or goes through the planning board, they're going to be putting in work and effort prior to coming to us for the connection. And if we're required to deny the connection, then there could be issues. Conversely, if we just approve connections, because we certainly could.
Yeah.
If we just approve connections, um, Charles River could then not approve them when they come to them. Um, and then there could be a whole bunch of lawsuits. So, we need to be mindful of where Charles River is saying we are. And, um, I assume there'll be more to come from them.
And just, we have not received any, any, uh, communication from them in the past month or more, so, uh, we haven't received any letter from them at this point.
I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little, so you were, you must have been surprised that they seemed to come down hard on you, because we've all met with them individually over the last few months.
Yeah.
And not a word to that effect was spoken.
I was a little surprised to hear of this when I spoke with.
Yeah, so there was.
Right?
It was the room, the, the board was kind of.
And we've had a moratorium the whole time, so.
Yep, right. And they did, they did say that. They did say, um, the director of Charles River was very diplomatic and did, did say that we have our moratorium in place, we're working on our policy. That did seem to please them, except, um, there was very lively discussion. So when they noticed that there was, um, public, they asked if I wanted to speak. I'm like, hi, I'm from Millis.
Oh, my God. I would have said I was from Dover.
So, yeah, I felt like.
Okay. I don't know. Anybody but Millis, but, okay.
So I was kind of a hot seat.
Yeah, that is a hot seat.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
Well, we'll have to see. I mean, if they're saying that both Medway and Millis are not allowed any additional sewer, that's, that's an issue that will require some further meetings, I think, at this point.
Yeah. And the big discussion with it is, you know, it, when Glen Ellen is fully built out, there's 200 houses that we're carrying at the highest possible level. It's going to come below 103. How far below?
But we do, we all understand
Yeah.
that we're really 60%. We get that.
We're 60% legitimately.
They did.
They had it, they had it up on the screen.
On a different piece of paper?
Nope, same piece of paper, it's 67% or so, and then the 103.
Okay.
And they're looking at the 103 as a hard stop right now.
Okay.
So.
Good for them.
But again, it's, a lot of it's a waiting game. That's, no, if we do nothing, except not connect anybody else, that number falls as people connect.
But does it fall enough that we can offer more connections?
Ellen and I will disagree. I'll say 85%. She's gonna say a little lower, maybe, but I think that there, I mean, it's just a math formula, you know, if all those people connect.
Right.
I get to about 85%.
Okay.
And then we'll be their favorite people in the room. I'll go to that meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yes.
And like you said, we have the moratorium in place. You think they would have at least given us a little shout out?
Uh, yeah, so again, Jim Duffy, Millis. So, this, um, drives me up a wall. So what are we gonna do about the formula? Reality versus theoretical, whatever somewhat is mandated, right? Because that's our problem here.
Yes.
That's our near-term problem. Longer term, we have a much bigger problem of eventually we're going to get to capacity, right? But who do we petition about getting the formula to reflect reality? Is that a state?
I'm not sure if it's coming from the DEP to the Charles River, or if it's Charles River.
No, there's no, that's, Jim, the only way the formula becomes reality is, is when everybody hooks up.
Right.
Because then the, um, prospective becomes real, right? The planning becomes the, it is happening.
Understood, but we've got a problem in the meantime in that there's a theoretical overcapacity based on a usage number that somebody has put out there at some point in time that, based on data, is not reflective of reality. And this may date back some number of years, probably, but that needs to get changed. So the question again is, who do we go to to get that changed?
It's the very board that was criticizing us for being at 103%. They're the ones that set those numbers.
They're never going to change it.
They're not going to change that number.
No.
It's not a state thing. It is, it's the, the, it's a, I don't know the right word for it, but it's a private collective of towns.
What it is, it, what it is, is, is the Charles River Pollution Control, they only care about the planning
Understood, yeah.
and the, and the infrastructure. The infrastructure has to be put in for maximum capacity. If that's on Thanksgiving Day, when your whole family's in your house, or Christmas Day, versus normal.
Yep.
That's the number they use for planning.
So it's their number, yeah.
It's their number.
Yeah.
As soon as we hook up, that's what I say.
Yeah.
Take your number and, so, that's, probably shouldn't say that on an open mic. So, um, I'm going to shut the mic. So, we, being realists and trying to manage a town, we know that the number is literally half, 55%.
Yeah, no, absolutely, right. It's, it's proven with the data. The data proves what the usage is, right?
And they know it, too.
And some of the reason that we are so far behind on it, you know, so far out of balance on it, is the rapid growth we had with Glen Ellen. And, and I'm not, that's not a criticism to Glen Ellen at all. It's when you permit 350 homes and it takes four or five years to build them all out, you're carrying 110 gallons of bedroom for four or five years for that last house that is to be built.
When it's 55.
Well, so maybe in the future, we permit X phases that helps.
That's the other way to do it. I mean, there's other ways to do it, and.
Smart.
A lot of ways to, you know.
And, and I think that, when we, I think we believe that when everybody does get connected, we're going to be in the mid-80s.
Yes.
And then we can start talking about, do we want to go up to 95? You know, what's, what's our cap at that moment?
Understood.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not a fan of make people connect so that we can.
Oh, that's not, that's off the table.
Get to, well, so.
Oh, they brought it up, though.
Right, you said, when everybody gets connected.
Yeah, no, they, they said, no, it, it's hard to put in place, but then people get used to it, you know, to make them connect within 10 years, and I'm sitting there going.
Oh, my God, yeah, we're not doing that.
No. Because that's, that, that's.
We're not, okay.
We already, we already went through that.
We already, I told them, we already went through that.
But, so, you know, I don't like to take no for an answer. They're using a wrong number, and somebody needs to beseech them.
We need to push back.
As to what the right number is, and maybe our state representatives or DEP that like to get involved in this stuff can.
Yes.
Madam Chair, can anybody attend these meetings? You said you were, you went as public, so you could go to the next meeting.
I'm all over that.
Jim?
I'll email you when the next one is.
If you would like us to represent us.
I think they're in the afternoon.
Just throwing it out there.
Stop using 411 Union. It's always bothered me with Charles River Pollution Control. I wish we could get out from under them. I, I don't like the fact that they hold our community hostage. I think the town's done a great job over the years, and I think we need to really, like, he said, get our state reps involved, but also maybe bring them in here at a public hearing and let them know the rate pay is how they feel. You know, it's, you know, you go there and they go, well, you know, you do, no, you know, we shouldn't be bullied by them. And I think we've been bullied by them long enough. And I think it's time to really push back and, and let them know how the public feels. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and. Yeah, and, and yeah, as soon as Glen Ellen's connected too, that's gonna free up almost thirty thousand gallons immediately. And that's gonna drop us below a hundred and three percent.
But it's a short term, it's a short term thing.
Well, it, it, yeah, until you get the other one. And we've tried the stick approach. We're not doing that again in my term. And uh, the carrot approach is what we're trying next. The um, you know, if we have reasonable hookup fees and we can make it so that there's a reason, as the people with the forty-foot.
If you want to subsidize my hookup.
Yeah. Well, people with a forty-foot run on their driveway makes no sense. But I know people on Clues Road who've had so-and-forther house for twenty years and it's a fifteen-foot run to the stub. It's, it's not going to be a.
Well, I do.
The minute their septic fails, it's way cost of, way more cost of fifty for them.
I do, I did meet with the Board of Health. I met with uh, the Board of Health and talked, John, about, he's, he's, he's finally putting a database together. It's gonna take him a little time. Who has septic?
Right.
Because we're not even monitoring who's failing.
Oh, God.
No, we're not, because unless they tell us, unless their neighbors complain, we, we don't know if they fail and they just go put a stopgap or a new, or a new septic in.
Oh, that's not good.
I'll make, I'll make quickly one of the.
But he's working on it, so. He's working on it.
Try and follow protocol.
Okay.
There was a list back in the spring as to who had septic and didn't have septic. I'm not on the list.
Should you be?
Um, I don't, I have septic. I'm not hooked up.
And you're not on the list.
I'm not on the list.
Well, I said, he's putting together a list, so I don't know what list.
Let's get a better list.
Yes. He, we, we're, we're circling the wagons.
I do just want to say before we move on from this topic, that the Director of Charles River Pollution Control has been great. She, she did definitely speak to the board, um, on our behalf, um, reminded them about our moratorium and that, and the work we've been doing, um, to try to get a policy in place and make some good plans moving forward. So um, it wasn't all negative. I did just want to.
I think continued active communication with them will be helpful going forward. To communicate to them what we're doing. We have done a lot of that to the staff. We've, you know, we've attended a few of their meetings. Um, I know Medway has similar concerns. I did speak to the town administrator there last week. So it's something that we'll certainly be continuing that communication with them on. And uh, you know, addressing those concerns. So it was a little bit of a surprise for me, as I said, to get that feedback after the conversations that we had earlier.
Right.
Okay, the only other um, liaison um, report I have is the Cemetery Committee met. It was, it's always an interesting discussion. Um, but there were some discussions regarding um, the, the new section. There were some discussions regarding, um, there was a citizen that came to discuss moving a headstone. There was um, discussions about um, posting on our, having it posted, like different rules and regulations. Things like how many cremations per lot, um, stuff of that nature. So they're working on a rules and regulations document that will be finalized, presented to us and, and posted. Um, so.
Do they not have, do they not currently have rules and regulations?
They do, they do. Um, they're just, there's, there was a certain, they do. I have them right here. They just might not have been as easily discoverable to public as, as they should be.
Okay.
So um, that's gonna be rectified. Alright, and by the way, it's six cremations per lot.
Really?
Yes. Just in case the public was wondering. Um, alright. So next we have the approval of draft minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the draft minutes as written.
For?
For six-six, six-twenty-three, eight-two, eight-twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve all of the draft minutes, June sixth, June twenty-third, August second, and August twenty-second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, next we have setting the upcoming meeting dates. Oh, I don't have your email.
Yes.
I have, sorry. Thank you. I didn't have it in front of me. Okay, so um, an email was sent out about upcoming meeting dates to be set. Were all of you able to look at that?
Yep.
Sound good to everyone?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You didn't have to write that on, I'm sorry.
Can we, um, can we send those out as calendar invites too, so they just populate into our Outlook calendar for the town? I'd like for all the town committees to do that, because I have, you know, the town, we, we're on Outlook for the town. I've got it on my phone and my computer and I, I just by rote show up at things that show up on my calendar.
You, you were ahead of me, Craig. I was gonna say that I was gonna start doing that, because I'm trying very much to use the calendar.
But I will.
It's really easy.
I will make sure that he is.
Send it to the public to.
Following along, yeah, there you go.
Oh yeah, you want your calendar filled with all of these, trust me.
I'll forward mine to you, Jim.
So the next, um, the next couple of meetings, we've got Monday, October third, which will be more of a working meeting going over the um, the warrant. And then Monday, October seventeenth, where we'll be signing the warrant.
Yeah, okay.
And then we'll have more dates posted.
The next meeting will be the Monday before the town meeting, the seventh, and then obviously the tenth. The board has a special meeting that evening to address any issues, any last-minute issues.
Can I just ask a quick question? What time does town meeting start?
Seven, seven-thirty.
It is seven-thirty.
So we'll meet prior to that.
Usually the Select Board meets.
Six-thirty.
Yeah, either at six or six-thirty, depending on how much business you, you have prior to the meeting.
Cocktails, past hors d'oeuvres.
Okay. Um, before we, um, before I take a motion to adjourn to executive session, I did want to just say a quick thank you to Millis Community Media for taking care of tonight's meeting, specifically Wesley Cody and Shelley Pitts. Um, thank you both very much for all of your hard work and we always appreciate everything Millis Community Media does for us. That being said, we'll be adjourning into executive session. When we reemerge, we'll just emerge to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel for the SEIU and the AFSCME unions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to executive session. I'll poll the board. Ms. Rosenfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, and we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.